Great, so we just wrapped up our executive session. Barbara, I can give you the notes on the motion in a second and all of that. We took care of that in the room. Up next, we have a public hearing regarding a solar farm moratorium extension. And before we get into this, I did have a question. I noticed we don't have anything in this work for docs as far as like the language. Is it, am I dismissing it?
I think I put it under new business.
Oh, at the very end, okay. All right, just kidding, nevermind, we're good. So for those of you on the phone, the public, in our supporting docs for today's meeting, February twenty five, on pages forty and forty-one is the language for our existing moratorium that was passed on September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Our topic of conversation for this public hearing is to extend that moratorium an additional one hundred and eighty days. The planning board has been making great progress on this ordinance, however, we just felt we need a little bit more time to get everything wrapped up. So we scheduled this public hearing before we take any action to extend the moratorium. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on the moratorium extension?
You know, Mallory, I would like to say something. I didn't plan to speak on this tonight necessarily. Should I take my, yeah. So my name is John Brandon, I live on Lindsay Lane here in South Berwick. And I've actually been in the clean energy space for a really long time and worked as a solar developer for a while, I don't currently. But I will say the moratorium is not a bad idea. We're at a place and time where solar is going to be important, the big community solar projects are going to be important. But I think as we jump into some sensitive habitat, conservation land that may be questionable, we're not there yet. Climate crisis is real, we have to start doing renewable and locally generated energy. That's, that's a good Yankee mentality of, of security to have locally sourced energy. But we have to do it in the right spaces, in the right places. And I think giving a little bit of time and a little bit of resource to look at that makes a lot of sense, so.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly kind of what our intention was with the moratorium was to think about our town and where we want it. So thank you.
May I do a follow-up question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Something I haven't figured about, John, is the, we have a background, and I don't want to put you on the spot. If you can't answer, just say it, but I've been concerned, just a question in my mind, of say, like you see it in Vermont, all over the place, where you have bottom land, you know, Champlain Valley, that sort of thing. And like, say you have a site that has soils that are designated as national importance or statewide importance. What is the impact of erecting stands and solar arrays in terms of the resident soils that may be designated? Not, this is the top of the hill problem, not the bottom of the hill, you know, the white ones and all the rest of this stuff. But this is more of the, the prime, prime soils.
You know, Jack, it's a great question, and I think a lot of, a lot of local code enforcement officers or a lot of people who are doing siting and even sort of when DES and other agencies are looking at alteration of train permits on cap landfills and different things, they tend to treat solar as this impervious surface, which we know it's not. And so there's, I think there's still a lot to be learned about looking at studying existing solar sites, how runoff is affected, you know, how the soils are really affected, because anybody can sit with a theory and say, if I were to pave that whole surface with as much square feet, this is what it's going to do. But that's not what a solar field is, right? It's a lot of rectangles, you know, with a lot of spaces in between. And so sort of a half answer to your question is, it depends on the site. And there's a lot of soil, soil compaction, I don't need to tell you, you're, you know, you know more about that than I do. But again, properly cited solar, it will be important and will be ubiquitous throughout America, throughout the countryside. Improperly cited, whether it's going to impact runoff downstream from, or you know, the lower soils, the lower lands, as you mentioned, we have a lot to learn about that. But it's, it's to treat it like it's a solid surface isn't the right thing, but to ignore that there are potential impacts also is the right thing. So kind of a middle ground and really site specific.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else from the public have any comments on the extension of the moratorium? Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, Pat Robinson of Rattle Street and Chair of Conservation Commission. I agree with everything John just said, I just wanted to say, yes, we do need to extend this moratorium. And as Conservation Commission, we would like to have a, a chance to, you know, speak up about, you know, anything that's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Can I follow that one?
Yeah.
Pat, I did tune in to the last planning board meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion on this particular topic in terms of the performance standards and what's right and what's, you know, what's going on. So I would, I would keep my ear to the ground as, as those standards develop. And if there's a point in time, and I'm sure there will be, with this public hearing on that, that that'll be the time to, or even before that, to, to have a white paper or whatever for the planning board to offer suggested performance standards that would mitigate the potential impact.
Sure.
All right, last chance, anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Just a question. When is the one hundred and eighty days extension, does it begin at that, where this one would have been up or does it go from today?
I would move, if we took action on this tonight, I would move that the effective date of this moratorium would be March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah.
Right, so it would be a real extension of what?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and so, and we'll, we'll have, we'll make sure to be super specific in that, we'll make it to that point later on in the meeting. Cause I think that's.
It does state it in the very last paragraph.
Yeah. All right, if there's nothing else on the moratorium extension, we'll close the public hearing, thank you, everyone. And we'll reconvene our regular meeting with approval of minutes.
And Chair, I move we accept the meeting minutes of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two is written.
Right. Give a motion in a second, any discussion or edits? Two minutes? None, all right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Since we're all here and not doing the roll call, I'm just going to say if everyone's listening. Any opposed? None opposed, motion five zero. Next, we have our council meeting on the twenty-fifth, too. Sorry, before on, on this one, any edits or revisions to the minutes from the twenty-fifth? None, all right.
Oh, that's the one I just.
Did you say the minute, sorry, you said the council meeting?
I did.
Okay. Was everyone clear on the last one that we?
I thought we were doing the.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wasn't being close.
No, I did it out of order, but let's just redo that, now I'll do.
Just kidding.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the public hearing minutes from January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, there was motion in a second, any discussion? Everyone clear on the tor, do I know? All of the favors, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion five zero. Now, we have the meeting minutes from January twenty fifth.
No, we already did that.
Oh, were we, I thought we were.
No, I just went backwards. Everybody okay with that? We voted on it, so it's good, right?
Okay.
I was good.
All right, sorry about that.
We're off to the budget.
John.
I'm off today. I'll be quiet now.
All right, signing of the treasurer's warrant, we have a treasurer's warrant from February third in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, three hundred and thirty, sorry, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we sign that warrant.
Second.
Give a motion in a second, any discussion? We did have the school payment this month. That's the larger amount. All right, any, any other discussion, question? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant on February, February third, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion five zero, thank you. And it looks like we have one presentation to be given from Robin. I'll hand it over to you, Robin, thanks.
Yeah, hi, thank you, I'm going to share my screen.
Are you hooked up to the Zoom?
Yes, I think so.
Well, we're going to ask your help, but Barbara did a good job, I think. Yeah, I think we've got it figured out.
That work, yeah.
Okay.
It's like it's trying.
Looking good.
Ooh, great. Can everyone on the Zoom call see that?
That's why you got a plaque last meeting. You're awesome.
Okay, and people can hear me, okay?
They should be able to, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Don't you love it when things come together? I had my doubts.
Is there anyone on the phone that can just like confirm that they can hear Robin? And do the screen?
Yep, I can hear her.
Yeah, we're good.
Great, thank you. All right, so, yes, I'm Robin Kerr, I'm the Conservation Coordinator at Mount A. And just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to report to you folks tonight. It's been a while, we were just talking about, since I've last been here, so certainly there's a lot of new faces. So I'm here to introduce some people to me and our work in the steering committee, and also just reappoint with others, because it's been a while. I'm going to try to zip through some of these slides, I have a lot of pictures, but I haven't been really good at organizing my new pictures. So you might recognize some of these older ones, but I'm going to just try to zip through some of them, just to give folks who are brand new to us, some background. So again, I'm Robin Kerr, Conservation Coordinator, work with the Steering Committee, Mount A Steering Committee, which is made up of various landowners and organizations in the Mount A area to include the Town of York, the Town of South Berwick, the York Land Trust, Great Works Regional Land Trust, Maine Department of inland Fisheries and Water, Fisheries and Wildlife, and York Water District. Thank you, all.
Kerry Water District.
So they're not on the steering committee, but they're certainly within the, they're a big landowner within the Mount A focus area.
We have their logos on the bottom of the slide there, and as I was mentioning to John at the beginning, again, John Brandon in South Berwick, I represent the town of South Berwick on the steering committee, so Robin does an amazing job as the coordinator, keeping this all together. The group comes together, and I'm one of the lucky folks that gets to help and be part of that.
Awesome, yeah, and Pat, I know was on the line as well.
Agreed.
So just quickly, there's certainly, you know, this whole area has some unique and variable history, but there's some that have had a lasting impact in the Mount A area to include back in the sixteen hundreds, eighteen hundreds, it being used for grazing and pasture land. It was a military base, the Summit of Mount A was a military base in the forties, and certainly when it was a ski area, the Big A ran from sixty-four to seventy-four. All of these have had smaller, you know, uses over time, but lasting impacts in the area to include a lot of old woods, roads, and trails that go up and down the fall line. Um, when the ski area closed down, there was a proposal to develop it, and that was rejected by the towns of York and South Berwick. And that's what spearheaded the conservation efforts. So the first committee that came together to protect this area was in nineteen seventy-five, began purchasing a lot of the land to set it aside because of its natural resources and to protect water quality and to be able to use it as a recreational space. The Mount A Steering Committee, those landowners listed here and what we just talked about, they were established in nineteen ninety-nine, and we had our first trail plan in ninety-nine. So they worked together to develop planning guidelines, and they're also an advisory board. So all these partners come together to sort of advise work in the Mount A region, but everybody has not given up any sort of rights to their own land. There's a larger conservation effort, the Mount A to the Sea Initiative Coalition, and we get confused with them a lot. They are a separate entity, although there's similar organizations in both, like the Land Trust, for example, are also on Mount A to the Sea and the Steering Committee. So the easiest way to sort of distinguish the two is Mount A to the Sea has a larger focus area. And their, one of their main goals is to acquire land, whereas the Steering Committee has a smaller management area, and we're not really in the business of acquiring the land, although if the partners acquire land in our area, we incorporate it into our, our management. So really, our focus is stewardship and outreach on these lands. And this map, I don't know if you can see it very well, but this is sort of like our focus area. So you can see that line that goes through the, through the middle, that's South Berwick on the north side and, and north on the south. And then we sort of use these roads as our boundary, so to the, I'll just go clockwise. It's been a lot road, a Dunkwit Road, Asaya, Clay Hill, Mountain Road, Emrys Bridge, I'm sorry, Bell Marsh and Emrys Bridge. And even though there's private land for sure around those roads, that's sort of like the area we use to sort of focus in on our management. So those areas shaded in green are, and those colored trails are, are the areas that we work in. A lot more of that area shaded green now, I need to update these maps. Our partners have been working hard. So why are all these people interested in Mount A and protecting this area? It's actually a focus area for the state, it's of statewide ecological significance. In part, the uplands and the wetlands that exist here are home to twelve animal species and twenty-one plant species that are considered rare in Maine. And a lot of their conservation goals that they lay out through the National Areas Program are things that we do to include minimizing the fragmentation, warning people about turtles in the area and turtle crossings, maintaining those connections for the wildlife, helping to permanently protect remaining undeveloped areas, protecting the burlough pools that exist here and the amphibians that depend on them, and removing invasive species. So it's a valuable resource for those wildlife species, it's a unique mixing zone for biodiversity. There's a large expanse of unfragmented land, five watersheds originate from Mount A, and we have the highest concentration of rural pools and pocket wetlands in the state, right here in Southern Maine. So I've got a little slide on burlough pools, I know they've come up a lot lately. Their spring depression sometimes, that usually fill up with water in the spring and summer, and oftentimes will dry up, they don't have fish. So they're essential breeding habitat for salamanders and frogs and that sort of thing. So, and these amphibians are also an important food source for other small carnivores and game species, and certainly critical habitat for some of our rare species like landings and spotted turtles. And so important habitat that we work to help maintain and keep viable. So there's often times where we're moving trails away from these sensitive and habitat, fragile habitats, or or filling trail actually to encourage species to breed in more productive habitats, not in the middle of an active trail, as an example. I like this graph, I know some folks have seen this before, but I really like it because it lists some of the animal species that are, are found in Mount A, but it actually has the acreage associated with what each of those needs. And I like to point out that the turtle, the landings turtle, even though you think of them as slow-moving and probably not going very far, they actually require one hundred to five hundred acres to remain, about to remain viable. Who would have thunk it? So it's important for all those things, for all the natural resources, but certainly it's important for people, too. It's a year-round regional amenity, and we do manage trails for hiking, biking, and multiple use. That includes ATVs, which also includes snowmobiles and dirt bikes and horseback riding. We have about four to four hundred acres that we manage, and we estimate about fifty thousand annual visitors. And when I say visitors, I just mean people who visit Mount A, not necessarily outsiders or not locals. I mean, just that many people come to the mountain each year. So we've been doing a lot of work since two thousand. Again, I'm going to try to go through these pretty quickly, because I know how many times I've already made that to the good part. So these are the trails that we put on our public access map. We'll probably be extending this in the next round of our trail management plan, once we have a better handle on some of those access points. So you see, there's a large area and lots of trail to explore. Some of the highlights of the work we've done the last few years includes clearing the summit again in two thousand and eleven, creating shrubland habitat and building a universal access trail. That's nearly a mile long, and that is at the summit. So that's something that didn't exist before in our area. Again, we had old woods roads that were runted and eroded and going through wetlands. And then we have the old ski trails that go straight up and down the fall line, also eroded. So I wouldn't say there was a trail that I ever recommended to somebody to say, yes, we have the skis and the lovely trail. Learn how to mount bike. So, so the Big A Trail is sort of this nice addition to that. So a lot of our work involves trail remediation and upgrades, so repairing years of use and neglect, trail maintenance. And now that we're over twenty years in, you know, there's a lot of those places that we've sort of repaired in the past that of course need, they're, they're back on that schedule again, probably more than once. Just more examples of things that need maintenance. And then there's also work that we have to do as a result of some vandalism. There's been a lot less of that since our work began twenty years ago. It used to be sort of like a party site and a big dumping area, and I'm happy to report that that has occurred a lot less now, and we're on top of it, so we do spend some time thinning that up when it happens. And then we also do other trail and habitat related work, like the shrubland, but also promoting native species. That's a chestnut tree at the bottom there, and pulling invasive plants. There's a lot of work that happens at the summit itself, the park facilities and grounds, it is the focal point where a lot of visitors either start or end up. And a lot of our work has to do with public outreach and education, and we do a lot of it in learning lodge, but also through guided programs. Some more examples of that. And we consider volunteer workdays and some of our special events, like the Big A Fifty K and our Trail Challenge, as outreach opportunities as well. So you guys hopefully saw our report from this past year. Here are some highlights from that, so there's a stewardship report. This past year, there were three boardwalks that were replaced, that totaled eighty-five one-year feet. There were seventy tons of gravel that was added to the Norman Mill Trail, all volunteer-led. We surveyed sixty acres for invasive plants in the hinterlands, nineteen new signs were made and installed. And then we have all these workdays, community workdays, but also different scheduled volunteer groups and trail adopters totaling seven hundred and fifty-eight hours of volunteer labor. And that's important to note, in two thousand and twenty, the volunteer rate for labor was twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. So that represents over a twenty-one thousand dollar value. And again, and then we also submitted our outreach and education report, and so the learning lodge again is a big piece of that, but also other programs and activities were developed. Oops. I guess the note here on the second page, with the registered groups, our numbers definitely are still down since COVID. We have, as an example, we had forty-two groups registered with fourteen hundred, when I say groups, this is mostly school groups and summer camps that were highlighted in this report, the fourteen hundred students really visiting the summit and lodge and area trails. But back in two thousand and nineteen, we had seventy-one with twenty-eight hundred people. So our use is definitely down, they're not bringing the big groups back just yet, but I think, and I hope that starts to change again.
And I think we've seen individual, I'm sorry, I think we've seen individual use actually go up as people were looking for things to do locally outdoors during COVID.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I didn't bring those numbers with me, but yes, very much so. So that was sort of leading up to today, but looking ahead, I definitely wanted to just take a moment to talk about plans for the future. I don't know if anyone saw the headlines recently, but there was an article about Mount A that was mostly supposed to be letting people know about the impending parking project, but of course, the headline was about a proposed fee, which has not been approved yet, but it's probably coming down there, so. As anyone who's visited the mountain on a lovely weekend day in the fall or other times of the year, you've probably noticed it's been discovered, and here are some images of some cars that have been parked along the road, as an example. So it has been long coming, we've talked about it, I think the last time I was here a few years ago, certainly even talked about it before then, of the goal to get cars off the road here. It was becoming, you know, more really a safety concern. It's also a room, an area that's owned by the Water District, it's leased by the town we work, but it was owned by the Water District, and they also had a concern with water quality, so none of these vehicles, you know, if anything were to spill, nothing's getting treated here, so.
I can equate this locally for those of you that have been around, back when Lee's Mill Pond was, you know, people were parked on all sides of the road. It was such really a hazard, and if God forbid, anybody got hurt, an emergency vehicle couldn't get in or out. So we really look at this as a multifaceted problem for safety, for access, for water quality and parking, just you can't, you can't leave it unaddressed at this point, so we, we're familiar with that here in town, that's for sure.
Yeah, so this is definitely, you know, this is the hub, you know, this is where a lot of people, especially first timers, who aren't as familiar with the area, this is where they're going to access, but we've seen this sort of use start to spill over into other areas, too, and that's, you know, that's, I'll get to that in the coming slides, but certainly they have, so, so parking is certainly over capacity, is public safety concern. The other part of this project is the portable toilets just have not been sufficient, and people don't want them. So I'm part of the capital projects, infrastructure improvements that are coming soon, we're actually going through the, actually, I haven't had the slide, here we go. We had some capital funding approved in the Town of York, and it's going through the planning board phases now, but this is the engineered conceptual design. So the image on the left is the summit, and so we're not really increasing parking up there, we don't really want, I mean, that's the summit part, we're not really wanting to pave it over, but just improving it, so it improves the flow of traffic there. The image on the bottom right is the base, and that is a new area. So we are, again, the goal is to get people off the main roadway and parked in this lot, and it's been designed with best management practices for stormwater and treatment, so. And then also composting toilets are part of this program, so again, the summit and the base. And so with that, and as, again, you probably read about in the paper, there's likely going to become a, there's likely going to be a user fee. Again, it hasn't been confirmed or just yet, but I, you know, all indications from the town selectmen are that they would like to see. Again, it hasn't been confirmed or just yet, but I, you know, all indications from the town selectmen is that they would like to see more revenue generated there, in part because we keep going to them for more funding because it costs a lot of money to take care of this land. We do get contributions from our partners, including South Barwick and the and the other ones mentioned here. But the needs are growing. We're getting more and more people, there's more and more work to do. So as a result, they've asked us to look at the user from there. So that said, we understand that there will likely be spillover, like I said before, you know, into these other areas. And so really like to update our public access, access and trail plan. It needs to be updated anyway, it's ten years old now. And we have identified places in the trail plan from the past looking to control and better manage some of these other access points. However, it's it's just, it's one of those higher hanging fruits. And it just hasn't gotten done. So we're going to reassess that, that's actually work that we're doing now, working in subgroups to look at these areas. There has been increase, so anecdotal, but it seems like there's more use happening on mountain road at the Cedar Trailhead, just at the town line with South Berwick and New York. And I know I've heard from neighbors up at Page Street that more and more people are accessing there. That's a private road. And then certainly Bennett Lot Road in the northern end of our Norman Mill Trail. And we know we've seen cars parked along that road now. We have been working with the state in our new trail plan. They have approved an area across from the trailhead that now connects to Great Works, Checkerberry Trail. There's state land right there that was used as a landing at one time and they have approved that as a parking area. But I just know it's something I wanted to bring to your attention because it is something I think we'll see more and more use in that location. Yeah, I don't know if we want to look at. Yeah, we're going to look at the parking area, but I don't know about the road itself and if that's something. I don't know how the neighbors feel, I don't know the town feels, but it might be something just to keep an eye on to see how these changes there.
Yeah, you know, I'd say with that area I mentioned earlier, you know, previous public works crews have really helped us to keep that little side parking lot clear with the Norman Mill Trail. It's a great access and that really, by and large, other than some of the mountain bike community, that really is almost special for the residents of South Berwick to have a great place to walk and to access and to, you know, recreate there. So previous town managers and previous public works have really helped to just keep that clear, even though it's not an official parking lot, just to keep people safe from parking on the side of the road there. This new parking space, it's going to happen in conjunction with IFW and Great Works Land Trust is awesome at that log landing there. But there will definitely still be a need to, you know, keep, keep that area in mind as, as we see more and more traffic going there. And we really value people, especially the residents of South Berwick, being able to enjoy this land. That's why, that's why it's in conservation, it's for the habitat, for the animals, but also we want people to enjoy the land. So that future generations value conservation, because without that use and that enjoyment of it, they won't realize the value.
Yeah, question, the base parking lot, the thing proposed, I know that's going to be residing north, but what is the, what are those two roads that intersect?
That was probably, so the base is really the access, the mountain access road, the summit road proper and mountain road right there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's really near Mallory, right where the Center for Wildlife was kind of between the access road and where people park on the side.
I live on Bell Marsh Road and I can very much appreciate this.
Yes, I can.
That's, sorry, I know I go over my come. But I just, again, wanted to reintroduce people to the work that we're doing and just reiterate our appreciation for your continued support. But also with, you know, the work and the new trail plan, you know, hoping we can work more together in the future as well. And actually, in the near term, with the new trail plan, we'll probably be back in touch with an update with the MOU as well.
One of the things that we've done over the years is really try to not ask South Berwick's contribution to go up significantly. I don't think we've really gone up at all in the past. I've been on the steering committee since oh nine. We've done a lot of, as you can hear, we've done a lot of capital improvements. There's a lot that actually is in the town of York proper, so we sort of expect that. But all of this, Robin said, all the partners contribute. So what we really tried to do is, is to kind of squeeze the sponge and ask for things, you know, again, previous public works directors have helped with some of the litter cleanups that have happened. They'll send a truck out. So rather than just the financial contribution, that support that we can all chip in. And the reason why I volunteer there, completely volunteer basis is I'm selfish. I like the area to be better. And if more people, of course, should give some of their time when they have their resources. We've talked about maybe looking at closing off some trailheads and doing some boulders or gates or different things. So there could be an opportunity again for some workforce, some manpower, labor that's already happening. We know that, you know, public works departments can be stretched tight, but during a slow afternoon or, you know, a quiet summer evening when there's not a big paving project or some other project going on, there could be some opportunities for, in addition to the contribution that the town has given over the years, to do some good old fashioned Yankee chip in and get some work done.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, the work that we do helps to balance, you know, wildlife, natural resources, water quality and sustainable recreation.
That's it.
Yeah.
I know we've taken up a lot of time, but I'd love to hear if there's any questions. If anybody would like to reach out to myself.
It's been my great pleasure to watch the work unfold over the years and I want to continue to congratulate you, Robin, for your leadership and, you know, these, these, these projects taking on, well, let's have a park. Well, we have a park, let's have a trail. Well, now we're in the tertiary stage of park development, how do we keep it from getting off the depth? And, and you're very modest and all the rest of stuff, but under your leadership, they basically developed into a, a park with an international reputation. And it's a gem for a particular area. I want to thank you, Joe, for your service also to serve on stairs. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jen. Very nice.
Thank you both for coming in, this is a great update. I'm excited about the park. A little sooner next time.
Thank you. Tim, did you want to make any question?
No, thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Tim, thanks for having us.
We can help in any way we can.
Thank you.
We will.
So we'll move on to public comments. If there are anyone on phone or in the room that wants to speak about anything that is not on our agenda. Go ahead, Abby.
Hi, good evening, Abby Sherwood, fit you on Tim Eric Drive. First of all, I wanted to thank Tim and Public Works, the light is on at the ice skating rink. I was there the other night and it came on at about five oh five, so it was perfect. We didn't, we don't, I've got young children, so we don't stay long enough to know when it shut off, but thank you for shutting it on. Tim, you had mentioned this in the manager's report, I think the last meeting, and I just wanted, I didn't see it listed in the agenda, I wanted to get a follow up. There was some ambiguity with regards to the plowing of the sidewalks and I wanted to know if you had any more clarity to provide with that. A lot of spots in Aggie right now haven't been, the sidewalks have not been cleared. So I wanted to know if you had come up with something more concrete.
Yeah, so I have, but it's a slow process. There's like three or four parts to it. And later on in the meeting, I'll be giving a report to the council. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but, you know, along with the state law, manpower, equipment, things that we are going to need to move the project forward. I don't have an immediate solution and answer tonight. But we've been having staff meetings and meeting about it. I think we've got a plan forward. It may not be, we may not get it done this year. There's a significant cost in equipment, manpower, but it is on the radar and we're trying to get it done at some point. So if you stay with the meeting, I'll have the rest of it for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the phone?
John, I can get more of those.
All right, we'll close public comments and run the town manager's report.
Thank you for coming in. So Madam Chair and member of the council, one of the things that recently came to my attention is with some new councils and even some of the other councils like Abby, who were previous on the council. We've had a lot of changes in staffing, so you may not know all these faces. So I've decided that what I'm going to start doing over the next couple of months is bringing some of my department heads and introduce them to you, so you'll know their names and their faces. And then at the end of my report, we'll talk about getting out to some of our facilities, employing some of our facilities, because it's definitely a challenge for you to make budget decisions. It's a lot easier if you can put the names to the faces and you can see the facilities in the background. So tonight we have Dushaw, he's the library director and I'd like to introduce him to the council. He came on November and I'd like to have Lee stand up and kind of introduce himself and talk to you for a couple of minutes. So Lee, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lee. A little bit about me, I'm from North Carolina originally. I went to school down there. I wonder if I said actually.
Yes, it says that.
Yeah.
Relax. I went to school down there, library school, and I worked in Raleigh as a children's librarian. I worked in Brooklyn as a children's librarian as well. And I found myself in Maine a little over a year ago and I'm really thrilled to be in South Berwick. You have a really lovely library, there's a great staff. And yeah, I thought I would go over a few of the things. I haven't been, I've only been there since November, but I thought I'd go over a few of the places where we're focusing our energy and some of my aspirations. Renew focus on youth services, you know, as a children's librarian coming in. I just think it's, it's critical for the library to focus on families and children, a good goal for libraries vitality. And I think we're a really important resource for early childhood literacy, plus for kids to socialize as well. You can definitely see in the last couple of years, the value of the library and kids come together for story time or seeing other kids for maybe for the first time, you know. So what we're doing is focusing on new children's programming. We're allocating a little bit more funding to refreshing our children's book collection. We're focusing on getting some new furniture in the building, which I think is, it's going to be coming in the next couple of weeks, which I'm excited about, new displays for books, that sort of thing. We're considering different ways to reach the teens in the community. We have some ideas on how to do that. And summer reading is going to be happening in June and I really want that to be big this year. So we're going to put a lot of energy into that. We're working on expanding the adult collection and access to newer titles. Previous director did a great job with that, so we're expanding. We've got the friends to help us with purchasing additional copies of high in demand titles. And what I'm hoping to do there is curb a little bit of our reliance on the other libraries in our consortium so that we're, so that our patrons are finding what they need at our library. And also we're able to, to contribute more to the consortium, the other libraries that want books. Last month, we actually saw more books going out than coming in, which is what I like to see. So that means that our patrons are finding what they need without having to request the books. And also that we're on the right track with what we're buying, because other libraries want them. And so the way, what we're doing is just we're being rigorous in the book ordering, making sure that we're regularly ordering the books, finding new titles and just being good about, good about selecting process, selection process. We are also focusing on just continuing to ensure that the library is a vital resource in the community. Making sure that people know that they are able to access the library, our meeting areas for study, remedians for work, keeping it an open space. We're seeing kids come in to do homework. We have people reserving the meeting rooms, us carry out business, to do tutoring, things like that. So we want to, we want to keep that going. We want to keep bringing in local presenters. This last month, we have James Haller, who's a chef, who's lived in South Berwick for years. He came in and did a presentation, a book that he just wrote, and it was great. We actually had, speaking of the, of the bermel pools and the big night, we had Maine Wildlife Biologist Greg LaClair do a virtual presentation, virtual seminar on the big night in South Berwick, which, which was well attended and went really well. And we are also working on starting a newsletter, which I'm really excited about. I think that's going to be a really good way to contribute kind of to the, to the local culture and also make people more aware of the library and the resources that we're offering. And that's, that's my, that's my very brief presentation on my work and that's why.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Absolutely. Nice to meet you all.
Well, I would say please coming in and thank you for, you know, working for us and doing the job. And one of the great qualities about Lee is that he truly, as all the other employees, cares about the actual position and the outcome of that. And that's something we can't pay enough for. So thank you for the job you do for us, Lee, and we appreciate you coming in, thank you very much. Well, my report for administration. Obviously, I've been spending a lot of time working on the budget. We filed the
Yep, and they have, that's part of the, the smaller pages in your packets that hand it out.
You'll see, you'll see two.
Yeah.
You'll see two documents, the first one that we filed on the, was a, the completed item. So you get to see, these are all the violations that we, or the deficiencies that we had that we were actually able to complete in house in the forty five days the state gave us. The second item is the item that we were not able to get done, which includes training, a lot of the training and documentation that'll follow up with the training. Excuse me, and we asked for a forty five day extension on that. And I've been told it will be, we'll get that. So any questions on the public labor issue? Been in a meeting with the LA Town Manager Mike Sullivan, SAD thirty five superintendent John Calberly. We're going to be doing that monthly. We did contract negotiations. Today I met with the water district and the soil district on working out, then receiving a portion of the opera money, the, which is the COVID money. Finalizing the proposal, working on GW iPhone services and with upgrades to fiber for a lot of our, a lot of the facilities. I did a conference call a couple of weeks ago with our sister city, Testigui, Alabama, talking to mayor down there. We are working on website updates. We started that project with the company that we currently have revised for revitalization planning. It's going to take seventeen to twenty three weeks from phase one to go to live status. What we're going to do is, myself and Dawn, then last week in a Zoom meeting, we spent about an hour going over all the, it is very updated. It was at a time, six years ago, was a really outdated website, now it's an outdated website. They had a lot of good information for us. So now that we've got a proposal, I'm going to get the staff together that involves mostly using the website, which is the clerk's office, code, burner, obviously Dawn and Jen, myself. We're going to have next week, hopefully set up a Zoom call with the representative to go over the proposal. He'll tell us how, all the ideas of the thing's going to work and the staff with Barbara, obviously. We'll have a chance to say, hey, we like this, can we add this in? And he'll tell us all the proposals. So hopefully we'll have, not only the buy-in from the staff as a committed project, and then when we're done, I'll get it to you folks, you take a look at it. And if there's something you want to add different, I'll show you the options and we can pick from there. When we're done, they'll start building it, craft it, and then launching the live. So it's going to take a while, it's going to, it's a fairly good sized project, but we're excited to get started because when our own lawyers call us and the person tells me, oh, your website's terrible, I know we're working on it.
I just have a comment and maybe a concern that and we, this is the end game, I'm speaking about, and when it comes to launching, I would just hope that there would be a a break in period. a break-in period, so that we don't just flip one switch and have it go live. We've been through that a couple of times, and then all the warts and scars pop up as the, you know, general public starts using it. I just wanna be able to have it be clean when we start and not have to go through, you know, backing and filling to, right, to put patches in and stuff like that. I don't know if that's possible, but I would just have, like to have that as a goal, that we have a trial period and where the bugs can get worked out before we go one hundred percent.
There actually is, it's in a contract, it's in a proposal. So it's usually like the seven to fourteen days, they put it up and we play with it. In test site, and they try it. So, yeah, there's actually, that's included in the proposal.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Is there anything else on that, Dawn? Did I miss anything?
No. No, we got it all.
So, we were notified last year, I'm sure Perry passed it on you, that the state is, because of the US Census and the state laws and there have been combat areas, the state's talking about gifting out Route two thirty-six floor, Route nine Main Street to the New Hampshire border in one-on-one in its entirety for maintenance and transferring that from a state, state roads to local roads.
Gift being a second.
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Gift being a second.
Does that mean we can do whatever we want with it then?
So.
What, but all? What would they do if we shut it down?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Make it back.
No, so, okay, hang on. On the other side of that, right now, we're getting about sixty-three thousand dollars in state and federal highway transportation funds. So that would increase forty-two hundred dollars per linear mile both ways. So we would end up getting about another, oh, hundred and sixty thousand dollars in funds to maintain that, those rules. I don't know that we have an option to say, yeah, and they, I haven't got that far. Dawn reached out to the gentleman from the state, see where they're at with that, because it's budget season, wanted to get an update. They are still moving forward with that and looking at coming down, measuring the roads, doing whatever they gotta do. So I just wanna let you know that that's on the radar, just be aware. I don't know, really, you know, anything more of it. I do know that, you know, they have to compensate us for it annually, but I don't know that it's ever gonna be a fair amount. So, I'm sure, like I said, I'm sure Perry filled you in on this prior, so I'm sure it's information already had. Worked a lot extensively in the sidewalk project with Jay. Waiting to head back and fill Sauce here on that. And then been working on personnel issues, and that's what I've been doing in my office. So, fight about it had, for the last two weeks, had total line, total forty-nine fire calls, four medical calls, two car accidents, smoke investigations, three, six fire alarms, four wires down, one auto call, three mutual aid calls. They did equipment checks and they had one training. The planning board, as you know, what, what planning, I guess, is planning board story review laws and ordinances. Code issued seven permits last month. Highway Department, they plowed twenty-four hours Saturday and Sunday dual storm, straight through. I got one complaint, so. I just wanna compliment them. I went over yesterday, made sure that I passed on, thank you to all the guys. They've been working really, really hard to get everything cleaned up and keep going. And that was a tough storm, it was hot and plowed. And they're on, slow time, they've been working, putting up wallboard in the new building. They're waiting for the door openers, and they're, they have moved in and started using it, the heat's on. James ordered a hundred and sixty tons of salt, he planted a salt pile. And this week, they're gonna do coal patching if it warms up a little more. Police Department, they sent Sergeant Moore and Sergeant Upton went to the National Information Base Reporting System Works. They did a training on that, so they could get more accurate reporting. As you know, and thank you for attending the promotional pitting ceremony. Sergeant Moore was promoted to permanent sergeant. They've had forty-five offenses in the last two weeks, total fines of three hundred and twenty-five dollars, total accidents of seven. They had one assault, one larceny, one credit card fraud, and three other complaints. Recreation Department's been maintaining the ice rink. She reports on the ice rink shed update. She's had discussions with great owner builders. Around the possibility, building shed, the owner has been doing some, a mentor of the students at some with trade school programs led by another local resident, Shane Chek. Wendy Chain are addressing the project to the students. At this point, the construction will be targeted to begin in September twenty twenty-three. They've held a parent buddy fund of three thousand, would be tight, and she's gonna look for more money. They filled a bus for three, filled a bus for three quarters of a gun, gun stock trip. Getting a jump stop in the prime now that it's full. Families continuing to enjoy Shawnee Peak trips, successfully kicked off mad science session at Central School. Brainstormed ideas for creating upcoming special events. Started to get the summer camp plans in place. Secured all the major entities with a strawberry run timer, announcer key volunteers. They're now also listening sponsorships. About sixty-five seniors took advantage of walking class, line dancing, bingo, bridge, whist, privage, chest, bubble size, and managed associate, snowshoe programs. Upcoming programs, planning a Valentine's family skate night at the Frank on February eleventh, provided by Mother Nature's corporates. Planning for Valentine's luncheon for the seniors on February sixteen. Working with a new cook, she's getting set up. Work with the instructor and school transportation department. Then, something, our class, some our class, we're fourth and fifth grade, I can't pronounce it. At the school community center, working to create a new mom and taught our class, and that, okay, let's see what else. Continuing to take appointments, prepare for the ARP test preparation, meeting with the camp director. Continuing to publicize the strawberry run, organizing senior foot care clinic. And doing some research for the one, one fund on permanent rent auction. And writing up grand requests for the permanent rent auction. That is my town man report. So, on the I walked out, I could ask for a copy of what we're doing right now. So Abby, when you come back on, I can get you a copy of this map if you wanna swing in some, at some point. And the yellow shows what was currently, how this was originally left and done, and it's what currently is being done. The oranges are where the problem child, where we're having the problem. So I'm waiting to head back and fill Sauce from the lawyers. We have an estimated cost on new equipment of about eighty thousand. We'd also need to hire another person, a popper, to run it. Jay did reach out to the schools, and we identified, so you start to see on Terrimat and Chestnut and Hickory, you see three little X's on that. Those are actual pickup points, the schools pick, use the kids to pick up. So those are identified as class one hotspots. Those are the ones we wanna make sure the kids can get to first. So we've identified this. You know, there is the question about the state law. I've communicated to other communities, a lot of other communities, in some cases take what they call management risk, where they don't do all their sidewalks, but they do high-density areas, sign is kind of like this. And other places do struggle to get all the sidewalks done if they, when they have, you know, millions of dollars of manpower and equipment, and we don't really have that yet. So, we're moving forward, it's a stale pace, I'm trying to get it done. I honestly don't know that I'll have a good answer, that I'll be able to get anything done this season before we run to the end of the snow season. But I definitely, we definitely be doing something different next year. I really wanna stress that, I know it's a safety issue, I know it's a safety issue for the kids. We're trying to push the snow back as far as we can right now, and the following no streets, Jay is doing that. So it is on the forefront, I know it's a safety issue. I'm waiting to head back and fill on a couple final answers. And I'll have hopefully more information. So ideas, thoughts, inputs, you're on Paul Street, right next door.
Yeah. So Paul Street has a little something, the store that's right there. They have the school that's right there, and that sidewalk, when they have cars on that street, you, it's a nightmare trying to walk. Paul Street's got a sidewalk, and again, with the Christian school being there and that business, that one really needs to be done. The residents have complained multiple years to our town manager and done nothing, is right here in town.
Is that, did that little tiny tree put sidewalk, is that a little?
No, it's, I do believe it's a full-size sidewalk.
Okay.
There's the one right behind us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a full-size one, but then also we have two for in the end, right at the end of the street, so.
And those kids are walking to school through Paul Street.
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, and I wanna reiterate again, you know, this isn't my, this is, this is what was left to me.
Yeah.
And you, so. I will take input, whatever. So Paul Street, is there anything else that you know of? We, we looked at, Jay looked at other subdivisions, and it was not a high density where a lot of, a lot of the little kids, we did find out the little kids get picked up to the house. So the kids that are walking are teenagers and, and, you know, teenagers. So, we didn't pick up any other subdivisions that were, you know, jumped out at us right now. So, again, the issue's gonna come where, you know, right now, we don't have the staff to do any action. But we, we could, but it would be two to three, four, five days after the storm, and stuff's kind of frozen in there now. This would've been a lot better if I'd come in, back to July, and we had this through the fall, and we could, could have planned this. But we are making progress, and I just want Abby to know and the rest of the council. You know, it's moving forward, it's a stale space, but we're moving forward.
We know we're making progress, that's all, that's, that's good.
Any questions, anybody have any comments or thoughts?
The only thing that I would add is that on Young Street, you know, off the main street where the library is.
Yes.
The opposite side from the library is plowed from Main Street right by the, off the side of the funeral home, down as far as the library, and that's it. But that's, that's under current maintenance, so if you wanted to just put a little yellow line, you know, you know, three eighths of an inch long on one side, that would just, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I have a quick comment too. Is it Main Street, I was under the impression that it was plowed right to the bridge. Into Rollinsburg, is that not the case? Is that just?
They do.
They do, yeah, it's all the way down. Or it has been.
It goes all the way down.
And then you'd mentioned last week, our last meeting, Liberty Street, so is it plowed to the park on Liberty?
I don't think there's a sidewalk on Liberty Street.
Right by the county house.
There is.
Yeah, county house to the park.
Is that currently plowed?
No. I don't think, they do. Yeah, I don't think they do, Liberty Street.
And they do the park then? No, Foxborough. Okay.
So what this, in a nutshell, what this would do is this, this is going to add, if we're to do the orange, what you're seeing, the orange. So in order to do that during a storm, Jay kind of ran some numbers, but not during a storm, the after a storm, go through and clean it up. What, what you see here is about eighteen hours of two men doing those sidewalks. Is what that amounts to labor force.
And the orange or yellow?
The orange, just the orange. Additional on top of clearing, moving the stove, doing the initial passage, and then coming back through the second day, picking it up and getting it out of the way. Because again, once we do that, we can't leave, we gotta get it out of there, so we can file in a future. So if we had, you know, during, right after the storm, we'd have the small sidewalk machine go through, and then open the sidewalks, so the kids can use them. Then the next couple of days, they'll go back, and then with a loader and a truck, and start picking it up. But Jay did a rough, very rough calculation, figures about sixteen to eighteen hours of two guns. So a couple of days' work for two people. And I, right now, we do not have a staff on, staffing level. We don't have that, so just understand that's gonna be a. Yep.
Well, what do you mean for William to come back?
So there's a state law out there that says we have to maintain all sides of things. So I just, I've asked him the question about, you know, how does that apply? And what's the liability of not doing that? And how do we accomplish, if we're not gonna do it, you know, what is the mix on all that? Where does, where are the legal issues and the legal standpoint? So I can give you that, dive that in, I can give you both that information to help me make my decision. So, and he, he just, he's been busy doing other stuff. So one last thing I have, that I wanted to give you information on. So under code enforcement, how do we begin to do the budgets and start looking at spending of the art money as well as property valuation for taxes and so forth? I wanna make sure that you understand and you know, I'm sure you've been informed of this in the past, but if you haven't, I'll give it to you now. So I had Verner and Joe look at individual building permits, new homes for the, for the town of South Berwick. So if you start in if you started in two thousand and, two thousand and eleven, number of buildings, number of units, because we broke them up. We had to, I wanted to find out both units as well. You know, buildings could be a condo, so you'd have one permit, but you'd have a number of units. So in two thousand and eleven, we had nine new buildings, nine units. Two thousand and twelve, we had thirteen buildings, fourteen units. Two thousand and thirteen, twelve buildings, thirteen units. Two thousand and fourteen, we had thirteen new buildings, twenty-one units. Two thousand and fifteen, nine buildings and eighteen. Two thousand and sixteen, twenty-three new buildings, twenty-five units. Two thousand and seventeen, nine and nine. Two thousand and eighteen, thirty-one and thirty-eight. Two thousand and nineteen, so this is where our stats get interesting. Twenty-six and twenty-seven, so we had twenty-six buildings, twenty-seven units. Twenty-twenty, you did twenty-nine new buildings with thirty units. Twenty-twenty-one, you did thirty-five new buildings and fifty-five units. So you did have an explosion of living space here in South Berwick. So the average before twenty-twenty was sixteen and nineteen, that's your average. After twenty-twenty, it's thirty-two and forty-three. So you see this significant increase, which now becomes helpful for us for spending the art money, number one. But then also, you recognize that as we start going to budget, sidewalks, more people are here, they want the sidewalks taken care of, more services are being demanded, the cost of services goes up. And no matter how I move with the chess pieces on the board, you know, John, Jack, and the rest of you, there's only gonna be so much we can do. There's only so, you know, we're gonna have to do that. So I just wanted to make, give you that information, going both. Questions, thoughts, ideas, concerns?
Well, if the numbers make sense, that we gained a thousand in population in a ten-year period. You moved from seventy-four to eighty-four.
Yep.
Doesn't show the saturation of where those are though, those additions.
I didn't, I didn't do, we weren't able to do that.
I'm kinda hard to believe they probably fall on your sidewalk filing already.
They, they probably don't, they're new developments. So, and one other thing that we're working on, in the new developments, like over the one we just did in Cole Lane, the sidewalk is actually a walking space that's identified by, you know, a road, a line in the road. So we just follow the path, makes it certainly a lot easier all the way around. And that's the town management report, Madam Chair, and rest of the board, council.
Great. Thank you, Tim. All right, let's move into our business. I'm finished with this number one, planning board remote meeting policy. So at our last meeting, we motioned to, brief bit of context on the planning board. We at their January fifth meeting voted to, voted unanimously, I believe, to send over the, their remote meeting policy to the council to have, then have us send that over to legal to get a full legal opinion on that. And so at our last meeting, I believe it was, we voted to send that over. I sent the planning board's remote meeting policy over to Phil Sauce here, and including our supporting docs, as a fairly lengthy letter that Phil returned in response. And I'll just, just to sort of summarize it, I won't make you all listen to me read the whole thing. But basically, he says, in conclusion, while in his view, the policy complies with one MRS four oh three D, which is the state statute. Given the ongoing pandemic, he recommends a couple of amendments to strengthen and clarify. Given the ongoing pandemic, I, he recommends a couple of amendments to strengthen and clarify. The language that he, um, lays out specifically in this letter. So, um, I think what would be, and I'm. Please jump in and refresh my memory, um, I think that the next. Order of business for this would basically be to relay this letter over to the planning board, so that they can make the necessary adjustments to their remote meeting policy and adopt it as such.
I would agree.
Right.
I, I, I'm completely agree with that, and I, I think it's important to stress the fact that the prevailing policy is in compliance. There's nothing illegal going on as far as the planning, there's been public statements made about that.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, it is, uh, common that, uh, that our. Our planning board is meeting according to a bona fide, uh, policy in place, and, and these are suggested changes. And, uh, I hate to have the suggested changes, take on their own legs to say.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, we gotta change. Uh, so these suggested changes, meaning that, that sense, uh, I'd like to thank you very much for doing that, I think this adds a lot of clarity. To, uh. What were we talking about, the last one?
So I will go ahead and send this over to Betsy, the chair of the planning board, and, um. Really what you said, Jack, just kind of at the size of the point, they're really, they're, that the planning board has been connecting our business perfectly legally. You suggest some minor modifications, and then they can take this up, um, at their next planning meeting. So I don't think we need any official action on that item, anyone else have anything else on that one? Number two, this is the, um, topic that's on our agenda, and definitely, I feel, I don't think we have any. New information on the medical marijuana caregiver licensing, uh, you know, the planning board is continuing to work on, um. Performance standards for registered caregivers, um, and also making sure that that language sort of jives with what we proposed from a licensing standpoint. Um, I'm not, I'm not up to date on the planning board's business the last couple of meetings, so I don't know if anyone else has anything to add, yeah?
I, I tuned in, you know, on the recording of it, and, uh. Uh, there was substantial discussion, uh, with respect to, uh. Full occupation type things, you know, and. Major, minor, those sorts of things, and, and so that they're, they're spending a lot, a lot of time, not excessively, but. Good work to, to, to try and learn through, uh, and, and get something back to us. Uh, everything is.
Awesome. Anyone else have anything to add on this one?
Has there been any update as to where it may appear in the code?
I, I, I thought where we landed with this was that, like, there's this, there's this, um. Talking to each other, the two, that with between the licensing and the performance standards piece, and that there was a need. To kind of finish the performance standards piece of it, and then from there, kind of figure out where the licensing should fit in, so. I, I understood it as like, that's sort of like the very last step.
Right.
Um, after all of the actual, like substantive, substantive languages put together.
There, there's no change since.
Yeah.
What we last discussed, in, in, in chapter one five, the zoning. There'll be changes to, uh, section nine definitions. There'll be performance standards, and the next available number is, uh, sixty-seven dot three. That would make sense if that would fall in, as Mallory said, the, we don't know what the licensing piece is gonna come in, whether we'll leave some space. And, and, you know, so in case there was something else that would fit in, but, uh. And then there would be, uh, insertions in the table A. Which would, you know, which is basically the landing table. Those, those three places where those, you know, why, but that's not highlighted.
No. Anyone from the public have anything on this one? All right, we'll move on to, uh, unfinished business number three, comprehensive plan, um, so just an update for the public, uh, the council interviewed three different firms. Um, a week ago, yesterday, um, to. Just gonna ask questions and, and get an understanding of what their plan would be, if it's really a thorough comprehensive plan. Um. And I'm gonna be, I'm gonna maybe like sort of pass the buck here, Jack, I know that there were some outstanding items. Or there were some follow-ups and stuff that we got from the different consulting firms after, you know, our meeting and stuff, and so. I kind of opened it up to the council as to how we want to proceed from here.
Well, I think we need to convene a, uh, executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to review the original proposals, vis a vis the alternative proposals that we invited them to submit. And, uh, and then come up with, uh, some sort of scoring. Um, before it goes on to one, so we leave like a, too much of a distance between the interviews and actually discussing them.
Mm-hmm.
And then at that point in time to, uh. See where we sit. Uh, from staff perspective, uh, Tim, I, I forwarded the revisions that were received subsequent to the, uh. Interviews to your office. And so if there was any, uh, changes to the summary sheet that was provided for us, uh, in terms of scope and fee. Uh, if you could please have that done at the time, whenever we have the workshop, or not the workshop, but the executive session.
All right, so the next order of business would be to go ahead and schedule that executive session, um. What does everyone, I, I do think that, that, given that we just interviewed them last week, I think we should schedule it sooner rather than later. Um. We're gonna stick with the Tuesday thing, I would suggest next Tuesday, but also I would offer up this Thursday. The tenth? Okay.
So fifteen.
Can everyone do the fifteen, the six thirty?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion to schedule an executive session on.
It'd actually be a special council meeting.
Motion to schedule a special council meeting on February fifteenth at six thirty P M. Motion in a second, I'll listen, you say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Opposed? All right, we'll be back here next week, um, for a special council meeting, and, um. Yeah, I think that's it, anything else on the comprehensive plan?
As far as, um. Uh, any update as far as the, uh, steering committee.
Oh.
Debations or letters of interest. A week. I have received four emails so far.
Okay.
Of people who are interested.
Great.
I do have those emails, do you want me to make copies for you all to be able to see them?
How long did we say that it was gonna be open for? Was there an?
I think it was open.
Yeah. I think you could go ahead and just forward them all to SBA now.
Yeah.
That'd be fine, there are any copies. Okay.
What's the process with that? Do we do this all again, have a separate steering committee meeting?
It would, it would be like we do with, with JV, like with the non-experiencing, it would be appointment. And, you know, and we would do that to, to, you know, give a. Um. You know, very brief summary of, of role, responsibility, and then.
Yes, I think we would, we would set up something similar, so like what we had the evening for the planning board, and that's what, that's what we've done.
Uh, so we did the marijuana one.
Yeah.
We, we had everybody come in, we interviewed, and we talked to them, and then we decided after the hour. Or who was that? Give us a chance to get to know them, see what their views were, see what their strengths and weaknesses were, and mix it up so it matches.
So I would suggest to the, how long has that, that been up, like ten days, two weeks? Is that right?
I think it was a week or two after our last meeting.
It's dated January twenty-sixth. Okay, so then it's been out there for like two weeks, so maybe let's plan to, at our next meeting, to schedule. To find the time to schedule for interviews.
Yeah, we'll see them by then, and we can.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Yeah, and John, you can just forward them as they come in, I guess, okay? Anything else on the comprehensive plan?
Madam Chair, you'd ask if we put any money, we budgeted, we put five thousand in the budget next year, but that, surely when it gets to your level. Can be adjusted, and, and, but we did, we did put some, some in there.
Okay, thank you, I think agenda that we already had from this past, from this current year, like thirteen thousand or something. Um, plus the five, but then that's a placeholder at this point.
Right.
Okay. All right, um, moving on to new business, planning board appointments. So we have an open alternate seat on our planning board, which are ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this evening, we interviewed Bill Cole. Um, for that position, that offer.
I would move to, uh, point Bill Cole was an alternate member of the planning board, with a term to expire. Is it June thirtieth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
So. I'm trying to pay the motions, and I got the earlier incidents.
Uh, all right, uh, any discussion on this one? All right, we have a motion in a second, I'll listen, favor of pointing Bill to the planning board, say aye? Aye, any opposed? None opposed, thank you, Bill, and you're not here, but thank you for your service, welcome to planning board. And next, we have renewal of the liquor license for Odd Fellows Tavern.
Madam Chair, I move, we renew the liquor license for Odd Fellows Tavern, they're a business of good standing, and they've had no issues reported to the county chief.
So.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Right, all those in favor of renewing the liquor license for Odd Fellows, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed, motion passed by zero. And lastly, um, possible action on the solar farm moratorium extension.
Uh, based on the fact that we've satisfied all statutory requirements. Uh, I would move that we extend the moratorium, uh, hundred eighty days, effective March. Cover would be twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Expires on the twenty-seventh of March, would be the twenty-eighth effective date then, the extension, okay, so the effective, uh. Effective date of the extension, March twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, so.
Motion in a second, just to add, uh, that that would just be extending it for an additional hundred eighty days.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, all right, we have a motion in a second, uh, all, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone, any opposed? None opposed, motion passed by zero, thank you all. Um, and moving on to council member comments.
Nothing, Jack?
I'd like to thank the highway crew for, uh, for their work, this is a particularly nasty storm. I think we had a total of two inches. Snitch, snudge, rose and yuck. And, uh, I know the end of my driveway was a glacier, but it's a bit thick. And, uh, and it couldn't have been fun to stay after that, so, again, I did a dirty job opening up the roads and. Saying, as, as the manager mentioned, the, the duration and, and their effective work, so, uh, congratulations to them, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Um, just to reiterate what, what we had said, um, I attended that, uh. The, uh, Big Night, um, webinar, uh, very interesting, uh, and. Quite surprising how many people attended, ours, ours, shocked, there's a lot of people on there, so, just, uh. Very interesting, I know we use the library a lot, but it's definitely a resource that is, uh. You should put aside, so, very grateful for what we have, so, that's all, thank you.
Yeah.
My yearly plug to the library, that you can rent, and you can check out any cake pan you want, so for your Super Bowl, call them up, they have cake pans. Uh, I'd like to go along with Jack, he did a fantastic job in the storm. Four thirty this morning, the roads were salted on my way to work, so hats off to those boys, they're putting in a lot of time, and it's, it's appreciated by all, that's all I have.
We should include in our, our regular report from the town manager how many cake pans were checked out of the.
They have over three hundred cake pans. Yes, they do. Fantastic.
Anything else?
I know, I'm, I'm down.
Maybe, are we still doing a meal after senior summer?
Yep.
Yeah. Sir, last.
Want the cake?
I have no idea.
I think he's suggesting another, another funny thing to add to the list. Not, not, not seriously, I don't know, I wasn't serious, I think.
It was very extensive list. I'd like to have significant accomplishment.
So, Madam Chair, one thing I'd like to say to the council is that, starting in March, I have to get back to vacation, I'll be on vacation last week, February. When I get back, before your council meetings, we talked about this. Um, I know John, Jack, you've been around, you've seen the whole town inside and out thirty days, thirty times. But for all the rest of you, you may not have, I don't know if you've been to the fire station, if you've been to the transfer station. The public works buildings, and all the other facilities, so I'll be, if there's interest, I'll work with you and schedule trips before our meetings. Uh, the police department, same thing, go over and take a look, you get a watch, you get a tour, so you can have an idea exactly what the buildings are. You know, what conditions they're in, and meet some of the staff that's there, uh, and have an idea what we're, you know, what the building's at. I mean, certainly, John, Jack, and I'm sure you guys have all been through all that stuff.
I, I want to go out and see the new public works garage.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, so, I've seen from the outside, and things.
Yeah, and, so they, they've done a good job of that, I was over there the other day, so. I will be starting in March, I'll be doing that, so, you know, we'll be starting going tours to get you off the facilities, and, and I. I apologize on behalf of previous manager and everybody else, I didn't know that you guys didn't. Didn't know you, you're employee staff and bobbing heads in that you haven't seen any facilities, so we'll work on our, our, our.
Thank you, Tim.
We get half to the fire station?
You'll get half of the fire station, sorry.
I was just gonna say, Tim and I were like very kind of in sync on, on this thing, we have both kind of like reached out to each other to more or less make this exact thing suggestion to kind of get us a little bit more. Involved in some of the departments, so I'm looking forward to that, um.
Madam Chair, I move your adjourn.
Thank you.
I never missed out.
Um, all those in favor? Any opposed?
I'm all happy to test it, Tim, you're talking wrong.